So I should never ask you.
Yeah.
Tony, you, we were this close to starting to tell bad jokes.
Yep.
You are the forum. All right. Zoom land. Okay. Perfect. Do you have any?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, everybody, and welcome to the February twenty fifth edition of the Dresden School Board. My name is not Kim Hartman. Kim was unavailable this evening, so as vice chair, I am stepping in. The first item on the agenda this evening is agenda review. Are there any items on the agenda that board members would wish to rearrange? Or even potentially remove from the agenda this evening? Seeing none, then we will move on to public comment. Now is the time for any member of the public to offer comments. I would request, however, that if you do have a comment and it related, it is related to an item that is otherwise on the agenda this evening, that you hold it until that moment in time. But that aside.
It looks like the policy of approval for sustainability was. We have a reading of it, but not the.
Oh, all right.
So can we add that back in?
For agenda review, yes, board, we were gonna, we will add back in approval of the sustainability policy. Okay, so sorry, back to public comment. So if there are any members of the public here this evening that would wish to make public comment, now is the time. Anyone online?
There is, but no one's.
All right, no hands online, then we are going to move forward and straight to report of council.
Council is currently discussing a revised form of the no school on election day motion, which came to council few months ago and was failed. I talked about the motion with the board and based on that information, which I shared with the body, we decided to fail the original motion. The revised form, instead of being a day off for all staff and students, makes it a teacher in service day for students on an election day, which would involve some scheduling changes shifting around the teacher and service days. Right now, I don't think I can predict whether the motion will pass or fail. There's been some good debate. But tomorrow at eleven in the in the course room, which is just up the stairs, if anyone is interested in coming to hear that conversation. I think we'll most likely vote on that motion tomorrow. And I'm happy to send anyone the language of that motion.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind sharing that, I think it would be interesting. Any questions for council representative? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate. Moving on then to our Hanover High School NEAS decennial update. Linda. Decennial every ten?
Yeah, every ten years, and I sent out to the board members, I'm imagining it'll be posted along with the board material. Really slide presentation that just talks about how this process happens, was included, the parts of the report, and any details related to sort of the hopes and dreams of why this is true. And I'd like to just say a few things out loud. Just take a few minutes. Results may not be paying attention. The school's already been to a collaborative conference and has been the act of credit, but now the process includes an update in two years where like good teaching practice, NEAS visiting team comes back and says, okay, school, but how how do you hold you identify? You know, how are you growing them? How are your action steps? What is the impacts been? And what might your next step be? So that's what this visit is about. We'll have a team of eight coming. We already have our chair. We don't know who else is visit us. They will be arriving on March thirtieth, a Sunday, some of them. Then they will start their work on Tuesday morning. They will start with a tour that will be led by students. They will visit classrooms in their time here now up. Before that, they've already reviewed a report, which is pretty extensive. And they will also meet with students who will talk about their work. Again, this work will be assembled to give evidence of the growth areas that we have outlined in our priority goal, the five area, which two are dedicated to curriculum because that's one of the foundational elements that must be met to be accredited. And then the other one, which must be included in our priority goal, is the work improvement plan. Now, what I want to say here is related to two really important facts. I want to bring everybody's attention to. One, let me finish up with the visit. That is an incredible opportunity to have another set of eyes that are not us looking at us and seeing how well we're doing with what we say we're gonna do. So I'm inviting the board and others to send to me and our administration, the teaching crew, you know, Julie, Liz, and Dave. But you have ideas, but you're saying like, boy, we would love to have someone look at this. You know, for example, time is always a problem. How can we make better use of our time? I'm sure that's gonna be one of our questions for the visiting team. So let's use these. Look at what we're doing. And then the other part of it is, this NEAS concept has brought into alignment, if you will, and consistency, sort of the credo now at the high school. What you will have set in motion with your digit plan was your portrait of a graduate and a lot of it was our school district's mission and our own high school mission and making it alive in our classroom. So, you know, that it couldn't be better timing, in other words. So I want to say thank you and thank you to the NEAS process for making that actionable. And any questions you have?
Board members, questions for Linda regarding the NEAS decennial updates?
This isn't a question. This isn't a question. This is just when I say how much I appreciate all that you have done in terms of getting the school ready for the initial visit, writing up stuff, pushing gently to get people to look at this. And I say this as someone who hated doing the NEAS self review for multiple times.
You were so quiet about that.
I know. Isn't that funny? You know exactly what I think. But I do appreciate it very much.
I'll tell you the truth, none of it could be done without the support of the administration and the teachers who also stepped up to the plate and made time to do this work. And to me, that was the transformative process.
Any other questions or comments? We'll see you again in ten years.
Have a report in one year.
Okay.
We have a report in six years.
All right.
Again, these, again, good teaching model.
All right, so we'll see you in one, three, six, and ten years. Awesome. Thank you, Linda.
Yep.
Moving on to the Hanover High School Principals Report, you can see it attached in board docs this evening. We have the wonderful Liz Murray with us this evening to answer any questions. Do you want to provide any color commentary as well?
No big color commentary. I'd like to congratulate Jeanne Cornfeld, who just won the New Hampshire Environmental Educator Award, which is a really big honor. Deb Robinson was the one who works here at the school who nominated her, and there's a pretty elaborate vetting process for them. And it seems very appropriate, given all the work that she's been doing on the climate action plan, and it's sort of the the capstone for her on all the work that she's done over the last twenty eight years in this school to bring us to where we are right now. So kudos to her.
Had we only known twenty four hours earlier. She was here just last night presenting the climate action plan with her students.
Well.
And there could have been a.
Congratulations.
Yes. Thank you. Board members, any questions? Yes.
The BAFABAFA simulation. So part of our work every year at the high schools, we come up with our, our plan for perpetual development, and this year it's focused around cultural humility. And the BAFABAFA simulation splits our, split our, our staff into two separate groups where we took on two separate cultures, imaginary cultures. And then we integrated those two cultures together and experienced what it was like going into another culture. So we had the alphas and the betas, and we had our languages within those cultures and our own rituals within those cultures. So we learned about the culture. Then we visited the other cultures, knowing nothing about the other ones, and then came back together. And then afterwards, we, we had a really rich discussion about what it feels like to be in a new environment and sort of stepping outside of that and what it means to come into a school also in the same. Thank you. Yeah.
The other question, but yeah.
What are level changes?
Level changes in regards, sorry.
In a CPP sense.
So we had a conversation in CPP about how a student makes a change in a level in a class during a school year. So if, for example, they decided they wanted to take L two H and they start in L two H and then they figure out honors, sorry, and then they figure out that L two honors is not the right fit for them. What's the process for being able to make that switch so that it makes sense curricularly for them and also for the teacher, teaching staff, and for the class as a whole? So we've set parameters around when those level changes could happen.
And then what is ELO?
Extended Learning Opportunities. And so we actually, we have a position that's coming in. We're moving the position from a point four position to a complete eight position, and we actually are hiring for a new ELO coordinator who will be starting in the twenty five, twenty six school year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Moving on then to the RMS Principals Report, and we have Mr. Tim Boyle with us tonight.
To add to whatever's there, if anybody has any questions, along with the the environment, I met with the environmental club today, so we went over the CAP in terms of how it relates to the Richmond School, and we had a really long and good discussion about things that we can do to try to bring that to fruition going forward. It was really neat to see students come back and talk about things that they were, they understood as we go forward to try to make everything better in terms of the district. So that's the only other thing I would add. The only one other thing in terms of congratulations, we did have middle school cross-country ski team won the state championship last week as well. So keep your eye out, probably focus, you'll get some pictures and some. It's been a really good winter season, I think, for everybody, both at high school and at the middle school. We've really enjoyed having real winter back. Which also brings that we do have we have enough snow. So we have a snow sculpture contest tomorrow in the seventh grade, and then in the eighth grade at the second week of March, I think we're gonna have a winter party. So we're hoping the snow sticks around.
Awesome. Thank you, board members. Any questions for Mr. Boyle this evening? All right, thank you, but don't go too far. Moving into business requiring discussion, and the first item up in that is an update the RMS Family Survey and math. With information board members posted in board and also for the folks watching from home. Tim, did you, are you walking through anything, taking questions?
And I can walk through things if people want, if they didn't have a chance to look at it. Obviously, we, we, this is the probably the third year in the process of, of working towards changing some of the ways that, then the structure of the way math is constructed at RMS. And we've been trying to be really cognizant and conscious of what we're doing and trying to evaluate things as they move on. It started out really as something that was organic, that came out of what we had noticed in the eighth grade class a couple of years ago in terms of the differentiation in the Algebra One class. So we structured eighth grade math in a slightly different way in the second semester. It seemed to work really well, so we moved on from that and did that for most of the eighth grade curriculum last year. Again, it seemed to be very successful in terms of student feedback, in terms of placement of students in the correct math classes going into ninth grade. And so now we're trying to figure out if we, that's a model that we can extend further from eighth grade to seventh grade. So this year we have started that. So we started in one way. We did sort of a quick survey of what people thought, both students and parents at the end of the first quarter, and realized that the model that we had for eighth grade probably wasn't developmentally sound for seventh graders because they're younger. They needed more direct instruction. They needed more sort of large group instruction, having things being more directed for them and less individually fun. So we started to do more of that in the second quarter. We've again evaluated it at the beginning of the second quarter and seen that while that is moving in the right direction, we probably need to continue to do more of that because it is something that we want to make sure it's a little bit more directed in the seventh grade. However, the positive seems to the positives seem to be quite significant in terms of building confidence, in terms of being able to put back in to our algebra curriculum more rigor and more depth. Spiraling, so we have more students who feel as if they are in control of their own math future and feel much more confident about where they are going and their ability to do the math. It definitely is a work in progress. Probably a forty five number of math teachers to say, this is where we are. How can we continue what we're doing well? How can we do better what we're not doing well? And we continue to work on. So we asked for more information. We've got information. We're making the changes based on with the idea that this is a process going forward. And again, the idea is that the end in sight is having students wherever they are placed coming into ninth grade. They're well prepared. They're confident, and they have a pretty good idea as to what can be expected of them and are able to move forward. I think from some of those numbers, you see that we continue to have about seventy five percent of our students will be in geometry or above by the time they get to ninth grade. This year, there's a little bit of work. We have a number of students who are being larger number of students who are being placed into a class called Intro to Algebra. That specific name of class did not exist at the high school. I think two years ago, Liz, they had it sort of, everybody took Algebra One. And then the students who were maybe not as well prepared also took a separate class with it. So if part of it is how things are named. But we also have a number of students this year who are, who came in, who are in sort of a specific situation where we never expected them to get that. So just because of where they came in in terms of their IEP, in terms of other situations. So it's always a little bit quirky. A hundred and forty seems like a lot of students until you start breaking it down percentage wise, and then you realize that two or three students go in one direction or another because.
Thank you, Tim. Board members with questions, and I will also let you all know if you're not on Zoom, that our assistant superintendent, person in charge of curriculum, is also on the Zoom. If you have questions related to that, Robin is available, but board members, any questions? Yes.
So, Tim, I thought I heard you say that students are now more confident or. And so when looking at the document you provided, where it says the current teaching style makes me more makes me confident that I can learn the math I need going forward. And for seventh grade advanced math, approximately forty one percent of kids gave that answer, and in seventh grade math was forty percent. So it seemed the majority of seventh grade students don't agree.
Well, the seventh grade seems to be the, the area where we're in the seventh grade is the area where we're dealing with the most because it was a significant change this year. I, I mean, if we look at the eighth grade, it's significant that there are a large number of eighth graders who are much more confident. The seventh graders, that is true, there aren't as many who are as confident, but there's a large proportion of seventh graders who are neither agree nor disagree. And I think from talking to some of those students, they agree that sort of math is math. They don't really feel one way or another about it at this point. It is difficult. It's a definite sea change and a shift with the way things are being done. And we're trying to shift it back to a situation where it is more familiar to those students in the seventh grade with what they're used to. We asked an awful lot of our seventh grade teachers this year in order to try to create a curriculum to not necessarily out of thin air, but they're trying to create a curriculum that's much more individualized, much more allowing for students to go forward or move at their own pace, which is much more it, it takes a lot longer to try to understand exactly how that's. Partly what we're hoping for is that the students who are in seventh grade who definitely had a learning curve at the beginning of the year have now gotten to a point where they feel like they understand what's being expected of them. And as they move forward into the eighth grade, they will continue with that same structure and gain the confidence that they need going forward.
I would agree with you as a parent that it has taken half a year to set the expectations for the students. How many questions were on the server? Well, are we going to get, so here with document, we have data from two questions that were asked of students, but I don't see any data from the parent respondents. You're gonna get that shared or is it just the summary that's?
We can share that. I can share the summary. I mean, I, I shared the summary in large part because many of the parent responses were emphatic. I'll just put it that way. And some of the emphasis was not necessarily based on curriculum or structure. Much more on individual feelings about individual status. And I did not necessarily feel comfortable sharing that in the talk.
I can appreciate that.
And I didn't necessarily want to go through and read everything because, and, and to be perfectly honest, some of the some of the personal responses were enlightening in people's desire to go back to something that's entirely children. So we had a number of responses that math would be better if I had the textbook at home. We haven't had textbooks for a while. So, and the information is available on the internet. But I think people are sort of turn beliefs in, in the way that math should be done. And then this became sort of a lightning rod for those.
Ben? Was there a general concordance between the students and the parent responses, or was there kind of a big disconnect?
There was a pretty big disconnect. Or either that or was that, you saw there was a much higher response for the students.
Why? I haven't seen anything about the parents.
Well, the parent side of it, the parents, the response was about forty percent. The students was over eighty percent.
Did they have like protected class time to fill out the survey?
No, they did it in they did it in homeroom.
Okay.
So we asked them to do it. Most of the students filled it out. Most of the students seem to either be sort of said that seventh grade math definitely is something that we're working on. I've talked to Robin about that. We're gonna talk to the seventh grade math teachers. It's something that we need to move forward on. Eighth grade math seemed to be fairly straightforward and they felt much more confident about the structure of the eighth grade math program than some of the parents.
So in terms of this disconnect between the parents and the students, what are your takeaways for like action and strictly for helping the parents feel comfortable?
A lot of it is, I think a lot of it is communication, and I think a lot of it is we've had a number of parents who, when they actually take the time to come in and talk to the teachers about exactly what's happening, it's much more understandable. If they sort of take the idea of, oh, it's just students working on their own from videos. They have this idea of what that means in their head. But once they actually talk to the teachers, they realize that it's much more involved. So I think it's, it's partly communication. It's partly, we probably need to do something at the beginning of the year to do almost like a mock math class. Hey, here's what your student will experience when they come and sit in class. This is what they'll do. This is who they'll talk to. This is how they'll interact. And one of the things that we did find is that I, I think it, it comes out in seventh grade and eighth grade, which we had started with sort of organically, students will find other students who are doing the same thing and work in groups. Seventh graders, for whatever reason, don't do that organically. They sort of all assume that they have to do it all by themselves. And I, I'm not sure if that's a specific thing for that class or developmental or the teachers, but we need to be more directive in terms of hey, y'all are working on the same thing. It might be good if you sat together and worked on this together. Because one of the things the students in the seventh grade pointed out that they wanted more of was more time for group work. So we've tried to incorporate that, but I think we also and not just sort of allow it to happen, which is what happens in the eighth grade, for whatever reason. Uh, one more.
Yeah, I, I like those suggestions, strictly with the concurrent idea that's been sprouted every now and again at RMS is that people want more chances to talk to teachers directly and sort of in semi-conference style. And that seems like there might be a need there particularly for math.
Right. Deb?
I have a question. It's, it's a bullet point that says anecdotal evidence shared by the high school points to students who are better prepared in terms of skills than in years past. Is there anything beyond anecdote that can be gathered to actually determine if skills are there?
We can.
Assessments kind of thing?
We can ask. I just know that Carla and Katie talked to Corin on a regular basis. Corin has said Corin Benedict, the high school, it said. These students actually have, because there are a couple of different parts to this. When we did Algebra seventh grade, eighth grade, sort of accelerated, there were a number of things that we pulled out of Algebra to try to make sure that everybody could, you could take an entire class and move it through an algebra curriculum in a whole year, given that we had to get everybody in the same place at the same time. When you have the students directing their own how much they're doing, you can add more back in. So this past year, the students who have completed the Algebra One and geometry actually have a firmer basis in Algebra. And Corin has said that we've had fewer people move out of L two H who were placed into it. Or no, maybe we haven't this past year. No, we didn't this past year because we had students in geometry, but the students who are in geometry, right? According to Corin, seem to be doing well, seem to be have a, a better basis and more confidence in their algebra skills.
Thanks.
This might relate to the previous question, but looking at the data, it seems there's almost a twelve percent decrease in the number of students recommended for Algebra H this last year, and I'm curious why that is and if it relates to the change in classroom.
It might relate to the change because in the past, we had basically students who were recommended for Algebra One and seventh grade went through the class, took geometry in eighth grade. Then your recommendation is either you have to take geometry again, or you get recommended down to it. So students who had been struggling through Algebra One and then it's struggling again through geometry, the recommendation is that the next step sort of logically is L two H. You'll see that then there were a number of students who were in L two H who backed out, basically went and said, yeah, I, I can't do an honors class. I have to go back to Algebra Two with the idea that I don't have the basis in order to be able to do. So what we're hoping to get is that all of the students that we recommend for L two H are actually ready. So what we're hoping to get is that all of the students that we recommend for Alge two H are actually ready for it. Because they've gone through and they have the whole basis for it. So the idea being sort of. At least educationally. But a lot of times from what I've noticed, students who have to try something and then have to go back. That's much more difficult than starting something that you're like, hey, I can do this and then. So you want people to move forward with confidence, not be like, yeah, I I tried it in. A number of students and the research fairs this out who get to about Algebra Two. And then all of a sudden say, you know, I used to be a good math student. Now I'm not. Like all of a sudden, they can't do math. And it may just be that they don't, they haven't spent the time that they need in order to build the basis. For them going forward. And that building the basis takes more time for, it takes different amounts of time for different students.
Can you describe specifically what the change in seventh grade math this year was? And then what your intention of for seventh grade math?
We're in the process of figuring out exactly what the process for seventh grade math next year will be because this year we had. Seventh grade math, which is students who came out of sixth grade math who. Were exactly where they were supposed to be. They have the ability to work through seventh grade math at their own pace. But they have not necessarily, and this is a seventh grade thing, some of them haven't demonstrated. The independence or. The ability to sort of work. Creating or uh create a schedule on their own to move forward. So that's seventh grade math. Advanced seventh grade math was the ability to access. Um, through in. Illustrative math. Set advanced seventh grade math, which is six and seven combined, advanced eighth grade math. And then some of the students will be able to access the Algebra One curriculum as well, depending on. How they move through that curriculum. I think we'll probably have something equivalent next year in seventh grade math, but one of the things that we discovered is that. The Algebra One curriculum and illustrative math needs to be made more robust to match up to what. Students are will be expected to do when they get to high school. So we've had a number of students who went through Algebra One in seventh grade last year when we taught it. But when they got to eighth grade math, did not necessarily, their skills did not necessarily reflect. What we would expect. We're gonna have to add more to that. Part of advanced math.
Um, just follow up. So specifically, what was the change from last year's seventh grade math? To this year's seventh grade math and then. The advanced seventh grade math, is that the same kind of online modules? Eighth grade math is now moved to?
It's a, it's. Online module also depending on which group it's in, there is specific teaching being done on those. Specific class, specific skill.
And and what was the next question was um?
Last year we had seventh grade math and Algebra One. We had a class that was called Algebra One. That was illustrative math, Algebra One curriculum. So we had students who skipped from sixth to the Algebra One and what we discovered was that there was. A number of skills that were taught in seventh grade math and eighth grade math. That were, they were gaps. Didn't necessarily understand or note, especially when it came up on state.
Following up on Tony's question. This year, seventh grade, seniors to access algebra material.
Any other questions from board members?
All right, for being late, I'm not to drive a kid around. Um, I I think it's more more of a comment. Um, better questions. I apologize for that in advance, but I think um you mentioned the seventh. Grade sort of developmental piece, which I know we talked about in advance of last year that that was a concern, right? That eighth graders are developmentally much further along than seventh graders. Um, and I think. I would just add the parent piece of that. I do currently have a seventh grader. It's been. Very difficult to know how to support her this year because she doesn't know where she's supposed to be or what she's supposed to be doing. And I was just look at the log, wholly lost. Like I don't know where she's supposed to be, what good progress looks like. That's a really frustrating place for a parent to be. So to Ben's point, I think that's something that that we have to figure out for next year, the educating of. Helping parents know what what does good progress look like? And and or or what is, you know, what are the milestones?
Uh, one of the things that that came out of the survey that I thought was a really good idea was this idea of. Instead of, because we had for a long time divided and tracked in terms of of it will be based on. How are we deciding what? But I think it makes sense now to try to track, but it needs speed track of students in terms of a plan. So when a student can sit down with a teacher, with a parent and say, hey, this is my. Plan and this is something that happens in the eighth grade, like. Teachers will sit down, be like, what's your plan? What do you want to take next year? I I want to take GOH. Okay, if you want to take that, here's what, here's the plan. This is how you're gonna have to get through it. And that's something that we need to try to do in the seventh grade. So and I think that 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 will be way more helpful in terms of, because then it's also a pretty easy. Um, benchmark and parameter like. Okay, you're behind. Is it behind because, you know, you just haven't been doing something or you really don't get it? And if you really don't get it, that's okay, especially in seventh grade. Because there's still time to make it up. And I think that's one of the other things that. That this model that I think sometimes gets lost is that we had between eight and ten students this year who did not take out. Right, so they should not be doing. They should not be ready to be through geometry, but they're going to be through geometry. Because they they just did regular seventh grade math this year. They got to eighth grade math. They're like, I think I want to do this. They got going, they caught fire. It makes sense to them. They're moving forward. So they're actually gonna do Algebra One. In terms of all of their skills in one year and be able to do it. So that's sort of what, that's what we were looking for when we went to this problem is to not. Pigeonhole students who might be late developing and saying, I'm sorry, you weren't in Algebra One in seventh grade, so there's no way that you can accelerate. Unless you do a lot of work over the summer, because these are people who have done things on their own. During the school year and are now being able to accelerate and and get to where they need to be.
Before I go back to Michael, any other board members who have not had a chance to speak or ask a question here?
I'd suggest that maybe we have a future board meeting that just talks about this with the actual math department here. Could I get the sense that we? Yeah, we have, at the end of the day, the whole issue here is that we did not have this curriculum adoption policy in place at the time. And therefore, this whole thing was done without, you know, most of our administration being aware of it, frankly. And now we sit in these meetings and. Drill the principal, who I understand, you know, I get it. He's the CEO of the middle school, but he's also not. Math person. So I do think, I mean, we can sit here and continue to. Drive questions about this, but at some point, if we all want to know more about. This, because I can't even ask questions about it just because you don't really, I've had two kids go through it and. I don't really know what's going on over there because it's like, it's very complicated as far as what it's new curriculum is, so. Maybe we end up having a board where we actually have them come in and say, here's the curriculum. Here's how we're doing things. Here's what we used to, you know, tried to do. Here's what we changed. Or or been, you know.
I am perfectly happy to make that recommendation to the current or the next Dresden chair.
And that's, I'm just saying, I mean, we can keep asking questions. But it seemed like we, you know.
Yeah, um, Michael.
Two quick questions and one for Robin. So. When you look at the survey result. When you pivoted from having the teacher teach in a traditional way to this way. Was there any sense in the survey results that the burden of teaching math has been pushed onto the parents?
I believe that there was. A perception. That that's. Where the burden. One of the things that is clear, I think. Kelly brought it up in terms of our communication. Was this idea of where people should be. The students, especially in advanced math, and I think there's probably some interesting ideas to try to figure out there. Have a very strong understanding as to where they are in relation to everyone. And if there is anyone who is doing something that is ahead of them, they see themselves as being behind. Um, and I think that that anxiety is then shared with. Families and families are like, okay, we need to make sure that you catch up. So we're gonna make sure that we teach you these things to catch up. Um, I think a number of, from the pedagogical sense, in terms of the teachers, the teachers are more. Uh, comfortable with the fact that students are where they are. And they need to work through what they need to work through in order to understand how to move forward. And it, the idea of everybody being in lost step going forward. Is something that's really hard to shape. So it certainly is, like we had this year, I had, we talked about it in the first survey. Uh, teachers had a list of where everybody was, like, okay, you've done this, you've done this, and it was. Their idea was that you're just keeping track of where you are. And the students are like, well, all that shows us that I'm behind. So that we had to take it down because they saw it as a competition. Whereas the teachers saw it as, you know, it's just a a visual of where you are and what you have left to do. Um, part of that is that the reframing part of it is communication and part of it is sort of like what. Trying to have a better idea of what the plan is going forward, like where are we trying to get to? If we're trying to get to there, these are the things that we need to do. As opposed to, I think students are used to just, I show up in class and I do what they tell me and then I'll be in the right place. And it needs to be a more interactive situation and we probably need to do a better job of explaining that.
Kind of, so I guess my final question then is, if I read your document and says. Math remains contentious and then for certainly there's a lack of game of process. Do you ever have like a pebble in your shoe? Any doubt that you're on the right track?
Yeah, always. I think any educator would have a pebble in their shoe on anything that. If we're on the right track. And the the question is, are we on the right track for everyone? No. Like, we're never gonna be on the right track for absolutely everyone because some students do much better in a traditional. I tell you what to do. I can take notes. My brain works that way. Everything's fine. Um, and to have a little bit more freedom is is difficult for those students. Does the pluses of being able to have a student. Who has caught fire in the middle of seventh grade or the middle of eighth grade and be like. Hey, I, you know, I I really like math. Yeah, I can figure it out. I know exactly what I'm doing. I I think that those are, I'm trying to weigh those things out. I I tell you, um, Robin and I did a. Number of walkers the other day and we walked into an eighth grade classroom and obviously eighth grade is. Is one of the things that we do really well. I understand that. We're trying to move it. But yeah, eighth grade classroom during a planning period. Teacher doesn't have a class, but there are four students sitting in there, talking to her about. What they need to do going forward. One of them's taking a test, two of them are working on something. The fourth one is talking, saying. You know, hey, I'm here. I think I'm ready to take the test tomorrow. I know I'm gonna be away. I'm going on vacation. So I'm probably gonna do a bunch of like three or four units tonight so that I can catch up and be ahead. So that when I go away, I'm like, this is, this is great. Like, this is a wonderful thing for. Students to be taking that kind of responsibility and figuring out exactly is what they want to do. So those are the pluses I keep looking at. Is it gonna be uh smooth sailing? No, are there gonna be growing pains? Certainly, because there are a number of students who, like I said, are used to. I show up, I do what I'm told, everything's fine, I move on to the next step. So. We probably need to do better. We don't probably, we need to do a better job communicating that and making sure that. We, the idea is that we're all in this collaboratively together. And that the main plan is that the students learn the math. At a deep and understanding level, so that when they get to their next step. They actually feel as if they're confident going forward and hey, I can do them. I can figure out how to make this get done.
Looking at the time, I'm hoping that maybe we could bring this portion to wrap up. Was there a question in there for Robin? Because Robin is online.
Thank you.
Okay, hello.
I did have one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
For me, I was in the Algebra One curriculum in seventh grade before this change. And personally, one of the things that I really appreciated about that class was the study skills that it taught me. Having to prepare for a test, having to do the homework. I remember my teacher made most of the homework optional. But to succeed on a test, we did have to do that homework. And I think those study skills that that taught me have been really helpful to me, especially in high school. Um, just having that knowledge, knowing how to prepare for a test has really helped me succeed. And I'm curious how the uh the teaching of those studies does translate.
The teaching of the study skills is actually a huge part of it. It's actually part of the one-on-one discussion that happens. So we have students who are able to. Say when they're ready to take the test, like, okay, I'm ready. Okay. Take the test, do well. And then as they, if they do well or if they don't do well. One of the things the teacher does is sit down with them and say, okay, you did really well. How did it feel? What did you do to study? What were the methods that you used to be ready for this? Or if a student takes a test and it's like, didn't do well, okay, how did that be? How did you study? What could you have done better? Let's try it again, like, because you can take the test again. So. You know, what do you think would work better for you? Because part of it is what study skills work best for each individual. And so that's one of the things that teachers have really sort of latched on to. That allows them to do more of that on a more individualized basis in terms of like. Okay, because you know now that you've done this, you know, when you're walking into a test, okay, I feel good about it. What do I need to do to feel good about a test? As opposed to the horrible feeling, I still have the dreams, like walking into a test where you know you're not. And you're like, that's just a horrible feeling. Okay. You had that feeling. Let's go from there and build on, how can you make that feeling? That, so that when you get to a high school, you can be like, I know how to do this. I know what works for me. I know even though it's hard, this is what I need to do to prepare. To give my, you know, self the best chances of success.
All right. Ben, I'm gonna let you round out the board discussion on this one.
Given that this has been an ongoing issue of contention for a while, I do think it'd be helpful if we saw the full survey results. From parents and from students and the pretext. Um, choices, options given. If it's a time issue for personnel, I'd be happy to do the redactions myself. I did it for the strategic planning and costing out and calendar surveys. So it's, I have a, I have a system, but I think it'd be helpful if we were all to see that and make it publicly available, which we have, but we have done in the past.
All right, for the record, I still dream every three months that I've failed a test. So that that can.
And it's always math. I didn't go to any class. Surprised by the test.
The one I have is that I show up to a class that I didn't know I was in and then I have a test in it and I have no answer.
All right, um, before we move on from this topic, any public comment, any members of the public would like to speak? Um, okay, great. Um, we'll start with you. You can just uh step up a little bit closer so we can pick you up on the owl and just give us your name. And the town you live in and we give you three minutes.
Oh, okay. Well, Jim Jim Hurdecan, I live here in Hanover. I am the father of a seventh grade, seventh graders in advanced. And um, I think that the school has failed our children in that. Um, in a pretty creative way this year. Um, and it's, I think it's quite tragic. I I know what I heard was that this is about communication and that, you know, that. The school hasn't, you know, the parents don't understand that you've moved away from textbooks and that. Um, the parents are appropriating anxiety from the kids and I think that the parents do understand and it's not. I think that the parents do understand and it's not about, it, it's the substance, it's the absence of. Teaching and it's the appropriation of a curriculum that really wasn't fully baked. Um, you know, one of the things that was said was that. The, uh, instructional information and the questions and so forth are accessible online. Tell you from our experience, um, the, you, you follow the links, you get to a different question, a different. So, you know, a video that doesn't correspond to the lesson, I mean, it is a mess. Um, and the, the illustrative math has, by their own acknowledgement, they haven't completed the textbook. This is not a fully developed curriculum. But, you know, and so this was my, my main question in the school system is, how did we adopt a curriculum? That wasn't fully developed. Number one. Number two, did we evaluate this curriculum? In its implementation in other school systems? This is, if we adopted a new curriculum for our school system, did we look at other school systems and. Evaluate how this curriculum was working for them and the results that they were experiencing? I, I, I don't, that's, that's a question I suspect because this is so new, it would be very difficult to do that. Um, I want to strongly support, uh, the expectation that we get to see the full circuit. Both students and parents thought it was, um, highly problematic that. What was published for this meeting was a subset of the questions and didn't include the parent survey, uh, results. Um, and I think that, you know, the reality of the situation for the seventh grade students speaks for itself. There have been several students who. You know, parents who pulled their kids out of the, at least one or two I'm aware of, pulled their kids out of. Program because they're so frustrated with it. There's a couple of tutors in town that are. Um, swamped with middle school, seventh grade kids in particular, um, who. Who are augmenting the school or providing instruction, which to me is a, you know, an equity issue that. You know, not everyone can afford a tutor and we're, um, imposing that kind of burden on families and families that can't afford it. See if it's possible. So, um, I think this is a real tragedy and I, I really would like to have some. Answers for how the administration, uh, the people who are responsible for implementing a new curriculum. Went about this without, you know, further evaluation in advance because it just seems shocking to me that this could happen.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yep. So if you come up and just let us know your name and where you're from.
I'm Ben Herdakhan, I'm a student here at Hanover High School, that's my dad there. So my question is simply, I really think that.
Can you scoot this way a little bit? Sorry, just so I can see you better. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, so my question is really predicated on this idea of grouping everyone together, right? The heterogeneous grouping. And the reason I'm wondering about that is because I feel that if we're talking about customizing education, the individual student. Why wouldn't we group students with peers who are at a similar level to them? In my personal experience at RMS, I'd never felt challenged until I entered the Algebra One honors class. And then when I entered that class, it was life-changing. I literally do not think I would be anywhere near. Where I am in terms of academics now without having taken that class and then the subsequent geometry class. Because it taught me study skills, but it also helped me to realize that. Learning is, can be challenging and school is not just a, something, a chore, but can be. Something that engages you and makes you curious and makes you want to learn more about. Um, the, the concepts that are being taught. And I didn't have that experience, honestly. In a, in a major way until I entered these harder classes. So I think that that's. From my perspective is why I'm so concerned about this, but additionally, I think that the major problem here is. I just don't understand the logic. If we're customizing a curriculum, wouldn't it make more sense? To have students who are of the same level practicing in a classroom together? Students who are of the same drive, motivation, wherever they are, at the same level. And I think the, the. Practical thing to do, if we want to create more pathways for students to move off and around, would be to create. Different pathways within that system, rather than just scrapping the whole system. Create pathways within the system so that students can move around more freely and have those opportunities. But what I really don't understand is how the system just got completely scrapped when it worked so well for so many kids and when it was so. Loved by so many kids. And I think the other additional thing that I just wanted to comment on is that. There's been a major change in teachers at the high school in the Algebra Two honors curriculum. We have different teachers, a different, a slightly different curriculum. So I think it's a little bit hard to make any. Judgments on the preparedness or lack of preparedness or the rates of students dropping out of that class. I just want to caution that. Because the teacher has changed and that was a major factor in why students were dropping the class. So those are the two points that I wanted to bring. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Martin Masdahl, I'm also a junior at HHS. I was at RMS for three years. Um, I wanted to give my own personal experience when I heard about this change. Um, because I guess I really, um, relate to the struggle of being a student that was advanced in math and felt like. At certain times it was really difficult to get the help, uh, that I needed to actually find success in math. Um, I often find when I am like bored with a class or unable to achieve the level of rigor that. Helps me thrive, that I act out and that was really bad for my academic career. And I guess. Speaking from my own personal experience, five years ago, um, uh, we did something called AOPS and Scan Math. Um, which was an online, it was individualized, you had your own worksheets, everyone did their own. Um, and I can tell you at least from my personal experience that it was the least fun I'd ever have doing math. Um, it was very demoralizing. I had to have my mom help me do so much of it. And to me, it seems like that system is now what is becoming the predominant way of doing it all three years of math. Um, and I guess that really, uh, rankles me and I just don't support that. It also seems like. The RMS, uh, curriculum has become a live testing ground to change things around like year by year. And I just, I don't think that's very helpful to students. It seems like it's producing a lot of irregularities. But the, the online individualized curriculum, at least for me in the sixth and seventh grade, I was not development mentally ready for that. To run it at your own pace. I really wanted a teacher to help me. Um, I don't support that sort of thing and I don't, uh, I guess, I think the rationale for departing from a more. Traditional curriculum seems to me undeveloped. Um, I guess I would support changing this and I don't strongly oppose the. Uh, individualized curriculum. I don't think that's a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room tonight? Checking online. If you have a public comment online, just raise your hand, we can recognize you. Okay, seeing none.
Bella. Sorry, I just wanted to add one thing. Some board members have, uh, mentioned supporting seeing the full data. And that's something that I definitely agree with. One of the questions that I have about the data on this sheet is that it's. Representative of the grade as a whole and I'd be curious to see. How that data changes based on where students are in the curriculum, maybe more advanced students, how they responded to these questions compared to students who are a little farther behind. So that's just something that I'd be curious to see.
Uh, what I am hearing tonight is, um, a desire, um, not only from the board, but obviously from the community as well to. To dig into this a little bit, um, opportunity to see some, uh, survey results. Um, probably have, uh, you know, Robin and Tim together just to go over the curricular. Um, aspects of this, um, at the very least to get the board a better grounding of, um, of the program and the decisions made and. Uh, where things stand right now and the ability to sort of ask and get some questions answered.
I'll just tell you that that ability to disaggregate depending on exactly where you are is probably not a big. And we can just aggregate some of it, in seventh grade by eighth grade. I mean, we basically just asked, which grade are you in? Seven, seventh grade, seventh grade advanced, eighth grade. So students in the eighth grade, we really don't have an understanding of where they are particularly in the curriculum. And to a certain extent, as an educator, and as an educator of all three hundred and sixty-five students that I have in the Richmond School. That is not the most important question to me. Most important question to me is how the students are accessing the curriculum that they need in order to be successful. If we have a curriculum that allows students who are incredibly accelerated to do well. Those who are not incredibly accelerated do not do well. And feel badly about themselves and where they're going. That's also an important thing that we need to look at. So again, I, I understand how all of this works and. That's why I say one of the things that math is so contentious, because people want everybody to be as, doing as well as they are. But my job as the principal is to make sure that we educate to the best of our ability, all three hundred and sixty students that we have in the school at that point.
Yeah, so I, you, you know, um, hearing a lot of things tonight, but I do think that there. Um, an opportunity for a more in-depth discussion, uh, with the board, um, on this topic. And I am, as I said before, very happy to bring this forward to the next Dresden chair. To get that scheduled and on the agenda, but Tony, I'm going to let you go one more time.
So I just had a process question because last year we had a lot of discussions about middle school math and. I, I guess I'm misremembering, but I thought there is, at the end of that, the decision was. They're rolling that back and there weren't going to be changes. To the middle school math this year that they were going to reevaluate and, um. Do a little more analysis and study before making any changes, but it sounds like. There was a change, so I'm just wondering, am I misremembering or did it happen despite that decision?
I would, yeah.
Do my best with that one.
This, this, we said this year is going to be a year of evaluating and monitoring. And that's what this evening is for and there's a lot more data to be digested than simply the survey data. Um, I've seen the survey results and what I found striking was that there was a, a really big. Difference between perceptions and student perceptions. Uh, and there's also a big difference between seventh grade perceptions and eighth grade perceptions that you see in part here. We, we have, again, it's, I, I know the, the comment about this being sort of a live exercise, anytime you make a curricular change. We can't like run a test, um, on some group of, um, of subjects outside the school year. So when we, when we adopt a curriculum, um, we pilot it. And I'd say that's, this year is for seventh grade as a pilot year. And, um, and we are evaluating. The other thing that we haven't looked at. Surprised no one's mentioned tonight is achievement results. And we have three now cohorts of eighth grade students who have, have, uh, exited the, the middle school and, and entered high school. So we should be able to take data and looking at Liz, um. And, and do some more research on the high school then, see what, what is happening. I've not seen a drop in SAT scores, but again, these students haven't, are just now hitting junior year. Um, or will be hitting junior year. So we have a lot more data to review before we. Either continue down this path or go back and, and do something else. And I'd invite Robin to add anything she thinks that I've missed.
Robins.
I don't think you've missed anything. I would go back to, we have been meeting with the teachers, we'll continue to do so. They have made curricular changes this year just based on what they are seeing and, um. Have gone back to more direct instruction, particularly in the seventh grade math class. So I feel like curriculum is never constant. We always want to make improvements. To help all of our students and we'll continue to do that this year and continue to monitor it. So this is just, you know, a snapshot in the middle of the road. And that will continue to take place, surveying students, surveying parents, so we can get more feedback.
Thank you, Robin. Michael, you're about to offer a suggestion on what types of things we want to talk about on this topic in a future meeting, right?
I think when you come back, Robin and Jay, I'm focusing on Tony's question. Because at the end of these discussions last year, there was an email that went out to all SAU families on February twenty-seventh. That said, we were not changing the curriculum. That while some instructional approaches that we have been using in eighth grade will be piloted in other areas. Acceleration opportunities offered in past several years will continue next year. And the across-the-board revision of the middle school program discussed earlier this year will be delayed for you. It goes up. And so I think we're just a twixt of the two, because after that contention last year, he said, the curriculum is not changing. And it feels like the curriculum has changed.
The curriculum has not changed. It's still, they're still using seventh grade illustrative mathematics.
The thing it was supposed to have all seventh. It did not, there would only be one seventh grade math. So the idea was that we would continue to have seventh grade math and an accelerated seventh grade math. So we would continue to have tracking in seventh grade. We have continued that. Students who are going to complete the Algebra One curriculum at the end of the second grade, that's.
Jay. So a-again, I think getting our terms right is important here and, and, uh, there's a difference between. The curriculum and, and then in the instructional approach. And in this particular case, the IM curriculum has not changed. It's, it's still the IM curriculum. And, and I, I guess the one change, instead of calling it force algebra, we called it advanced seventh grade math. So that's, that's essentially how it changed in terms of grouping. And so again, I, I really believe we need to take a look at data beyond just people's opinions. I mean, we're sharing opinions tonight and, and many of them are informed only about what the people have heard and not what they've actually experienced. And so, um, I think we do need, we need a meeting that's probably not just a segment of a board meeting, we probably need a public meeting. Um, practically before a board meeting, so everyone's not bleary-eyed at nine o'clock. Um, and, and to have the faculty on, on deck with examples of the curriculum. Uh, with information that answers the question about further development of IM and where, where that currently stands. And, uh, and plan on making a night of it.
Agreed. Um, yeah, I just want to add like, I, this was on the agenda tonight because the board asked for an update. I think what we learned tonight was informative and it informed. The decision that we would like to discuss this further at a future board meetings. This is not the end of the discussion. Just the end of the discussion of this topic for this evening. And we will pick this up at a future Dresden meeting and I agree with Jay's suggestion. Uh, that maybe it ought to be sort of a standalone item, um, in, in a singular Dresden meeting.
I just make one acknowledgement. I just want to acknowledge because I'm right there with. The people who have children in seventh grade right now, where, you know, we talk about this sort of in a theoretical. Context and when it's your child who is being experimented with in a, in a delivery method. Or a curriculum, I understand that that, that hits differently. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, I guess, that I, I, I feel that difference.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, board. Thank you, members of the public for coming out and letting us know how you feel. We appreciate it. Moving on then to our next agenda item, which is Vermont Educational Reform Proposal. Um, I had shared with my colleagues on the board and the administration. Um, my synopsis of the governor's current educational reform proposal in Vermont. I am not going to read through all of that tonight unless some board members had a desire to do that. My main purpose for bringing it forward was for consideration on this board. That we actually reach out and engage with legal counsel. On our particular status as an interstate school district, because in my view. I am not convinced state of Vermont really knows. How to handle the interstate school districts and that we would benefit from our own legal analysis of the situation. Which I will acknowledge is likely to be fluid for the remainder of the session. Um, because obviously the governor's proposal is not simply just going to be enacted as law as is. I mean, there'll be a lot of changes and updates and orchestration that goes on throughout the session. So that is the main reason why I brought it forward this evening. Um, I am happy to add a business requiring action. Which would be this board authorizing the superintendent to engage with legal counsel on these matters. If that would make folks feel better. Tony?
Um, I'm coming from the New Hampshire side and there are all kinds of bills proposed in the New Hampshire State Legislature with. Lots of crazy suggestions, including one school district per county in New Hampshire, which is a bill proposed. I don't think that bill is going anywhere, so I wouldn't advise, you know, getting legal counsel to evaluate that. So I'm just wondering, is this like a serious proposal with legs that we think has a decent chance? So that, ending funds or is it just yet another kind of air-brained scheme that's out?
Um, what, could it be both? What could it be both?
Yeah, my insight on it, I I think. In that with the House Education Committee in Vermont, I. I have no doubt they're planning something. It's the governor's proposal is one extreme. But what they're coming back with, it's like, well, not five, but maybe fourteen to twenty. And so that that's a pretty huge consolidation when they're right now, there are fifty two, fifty three S U's in in Vermont. Each with its own superintendent. Um. And so um, that's. If 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 the House Education Committee is contemplating. Consolidation, that's not as far reaching as the governor's, but pretty dramatic. I think it's pretty likely that something's gonna happen. And honestly, there's I don't see a way to really significantly reduce. The cost of education in a state with declining enrollment, other than to consolidate. To some degree.
Yeah, so I mean, I share Jay's view on this. I do get the sense that something is going to happen. Um, I also want to note for folks, um. I do think there might be some synergy of uh, working together with Rivendell on this because they've got to be in the exact same situation. And maybe some of that legal analysis work could be shared between our districts. It might be worth looking into. Um, but the other thing to note, and I think I included it in the in the the document. Want people to remember Norwich, which is a K six district, is a Vermont district. Dresden is seven twelve. If we're talking about some potential consolidation in Vermont. It is likely that Norwich might get scooped up in that consolidation work. Doesn't mean that Dresden goes away, but Norwich might get forced into consolidation with other. Existing school districts in Vermont.
Um, uh, having spent some time at the State House. Session. Um, there seems to be an extraordinary amount of. Energy behind the proposition and education and healthcare that they need to do something. Nobody knows what that thing is, but they know they need to do something. I think it would benefit the district to be able to let our representatives know about potential legal hurdles. And to instead we need to take legal action, have somebody who's been with us. The entire way through the story. Um, I appreciate Neil's point about synergies since, like you, I agree Rivendell is in the same situation. Um, but I I would be very much in favor of adding a board action. Constructive superintendent.
Any other questions or comments on this one?
I just want to thank you. This is. Taking a big amorphous blob and making it more focused.
You're welcome.
Well, the irony is, right, it's a little bit maddening to be on these calls is is that when they talk about. You know, school consolidation, ideal school sizes. The sizes that they're recommending, which is what you have here, I think on page four, are is pretty much in line with what M C S and the Hanover High School are as far as having an optimal school size of. You know, this is saying quarter and fifty kids. I mean, we are the largest elementary school, is that right, in the state of Vermont?
I don't know.
But that's what that is. I thought that's what someone said on our last call.
I don't know.
Anyway.
Be quite right.
Be surprised.
Yeah.
But we're up, we're in.
Very big. We are a large elementary school already, so.
Yeah, Tony.
Sorry, I have not read through the whole all the material. I'm just looking at the map, the like sort of five districts. And there look like there are two. Little unlabeled districts. Is that Norwich and?
And Rivendell.
You know, so are they not contemplating consolidating one within this?
Uh, um. It it is uncertain. So when I reached out to the Agency of Education's legal counsel, I asked him that question. They acknowledged that they were considering the possibility of making the interstate school districts involved in the consolidation. While at the same time acknowledging that it appears that it would require an act of Congress, and so they're not quite sure whether it could happen.
That's the.
That's the legal.
The bigger problems in Congress.
Question.
With this body's approval, I would look to um. Uh, I can add a separate element of business springing action. You all are willing to entertain that. Okay. Nothing else on that topic and no other public comments because our public is now. Go on, for the most part, except for Linda. Linda, thank you. Any comments, Linda? Okay. Moving on then to mid-year update on goals, I believe I'm gonna hand it off to the superintendent. Uh, let's see. Or is that for the board to update ourselves on our goals?
That is supposed to be the board's goal, was the goals that you as a board forged.
Okay, just so you know. We've been doing pretty good. Right? On our strategic plan goals. There's a couple of things that are coming up in June. Um, which is adopting the uh, energy plan goals into an implementation plan for Dresden. I believe that work is on target.
Yeah, in fact, some of these you can check off.
Nice. Um, also by June, we're going to adopt a revised curriculum policy that clarifies the board's statutory role in curriculum development and approval. Done. We're going to charge the Athletic Advisory Committee to develop a proposal for middle school sports. I believe they have done that, and it will be appearing as a separate warrant article. In just a couple of weeks by January. It's just passed. We're going to address the renewal of Lime School District's tuition contract, which expires in June. I believe that one is still outstanding.
It is, and I believe there is a meeting being proposed or waiting for the the board to be reorganized.
Okay. And, ooh, this one's particularly hurts me. We're gonna establish a committee to investigate affordable housing. We have established the committee. Meeting has unfortunately not scheduled any meetings yet.
One-ish.
No. So uh, wow, that feels a little bad that I have to admit that number five was not accomplished, but. I've got, you've got, you've got a few, well, yeah. Okay. All right, we've got some time. Dang it. Start betting on these board meetings on OnlyFans or. Not only. That was the wrong one.
It's gonna be an interesting video.
Yeah. Not only am I embarrassed for saying that, but I'm embarrassed that the rest of you know what it was. This is pretty awesome. All right, gang, uh, if we are done with goals, we're gonna move on to school calendar. All right, um, we have got the revised and finalized twenty five, twenty six school calendar. Any um, yes, Jay.
Just to reiterate that we we can't fit all the holidays on this nicely color-coded template, but we are creating a companion document to list all those. Uh, holidays we want our our staff to be mindful of as they're assigning students work and as they're. Uh, trying to better understand students' cultural and religious practices and how they interact with their school responsibilities.
Any other? J B Carr, hand up, care. Oh, no. Okay. If there are no other comments or questions, we're still getting over that last comment that I made. If there are no other comments or questions on the school calendar, it is coming up for approval. Later, we're gonna move on to donation from the Burn Foundation for.
I brings back to the calendar, just for one second.
Yes, you may.
So what would happen if on on the council sense of what Ella talked about were to go through? In terms of an in-service type of thing. On election day.
So it would still, my understanding, it would still need to work its way through the approval process.
So the the motion is phrased as a recommendation to the Dresden School Board, so if that passes in council, it'll come here. Um, right now, the motion is phrased to include federal, state, and local election days. There was a. Um, an idea bouncing floating around the room about amending it to just be federal and state elections. To minimize the number of days it would need to be shifted around, since there I believe there are five in-service days. And some of them are strategically placed next to March Intensive or other vacation times, so. Uh, right now, we're discussing it in council, but if it passes tomorrow, it'll most likely come to the board.
Yeah. Any other questions on the calendar? All right, now we're going to the donation from the Burn Foundation. This bowl. I don't know, Liz, if you wanna.
I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, this bowl is going to the national tournament again, because they're awesome. Um, so. We would love to be able to send this donation so that we can. Have Hanover High School and the Dresden School District represented nationally.
Any very generous donation of nine thousand dollars from the Burn Foundation, depth.
Once again, I would like to find out how much we get from the Burn Foundation each year in these piecemeal requests for assistance. Because we're always happy to take it. But I think at a certain point, it's not going to be available, and I don't think we. Adequately. Understand how much money she provides or the Burn Foundation provides. I don't think we adequately thank her for the enormous gift of the money. But I I worry that when it's gone. We're gonna have a big hole and a lot of expectation that. Our students, our family, our community has relied on getting money from Dorothy Byrne, and it's not fair to them, so.
I do know from my understanding, um, Julie works closely with Colleen, who's our um administrative assistant in the main office to. Keep track of the donations and every any donation that's asked for. On the schools behalf has to go through Julie first, um, so I believe we can ask Julie and Colleen for that. Data. I don't know how far back it goes. Colleen's been with us for three years now, so I don't know if there was Julie was asking for that data prior to. Um, I suspect it's somewhere, you know, it's a little bit more complicated, um, because there's also. Outside groups that are still school groups. So for example, friends of, right, that are not like so friends of Hanover Crew is outside of the school and not they they can ask separately from having to go through. And our high school, um, and so I think that that, like you were talking about, is is wide in terms of what this community has been able to access, so. My suggestion would be that we ask Julie um, and Colleen for that data, at least from the specific school related requests.
Hey, Jay.
I just made note to um, prepare a a report back to the board on it because it'll be easy on the on the receivable side. For the business office to go through and search the Burn Foundation and. Yeah.
Yeah, and I will note that we have, we have done that analysis uh, several years ago. Because we were having those exact same discussions. That we were worried about what would happen when the. Funding went away.
Could I ask, so I don't know if this is appropriate for that we do the same thing for Ernest and Ray.
I'll do it as required.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, go ahead, Karen. This would be more than just a burn. That would just be all donations that come into the school. I I'm sure we could. Try to figure that out because we have to identify all the different sources, but um. In terms of recognizing the generosity, the Burn Foundation, that that will be an easy search. If you do it across all four of our buildings, um. My understanding is is people can make donations to the school through the nonprofit. And then obviously you've got all the friends of stuff, which some are nonprofits, some aren't. And those are going to be completely outside of any accounting system with school, but. Right, but the ones that actually come to our school entities will be able to be identified on the revenue side. Are in a special category for for donations, so I'm sure we can we can search that up.
Um, yeah, and and a lot of the donations that are owed to the programs that they belong, they're obviously owed to the programs that they belong to. So I know that Jamie, we had discussion because it did come up a question about the funds. We'd said, um, but she had said that they had done that, but it'd been quite a few years ago, but it is possible, so I made note. For us to go forward and just try and pull that because. Again, I the same thing, I've heard the rumors that. Burn Foundation wants to start winding down.
It's interesting, you know, just all of the, they won't have to go name by name, but just all of it and maybe what Burn is. Sure.
All right, any other questions on the Burn donation? All right, seeing none, thankless. Um, moving on to parting words from retiring board. Oh, come on. Didn't we read it last night? Uh, so yes, there's one policy after reading a policy, which is the sustainability policy. Ben, can you remind me, last night we discussed this? And there were some proposed changes for definitions. Can you remind us again what those changes were?
Yeah, so it was passed unanimously, but there was a motion, as part of the motion, it was to move. Two paragraphs to the front of the document to help provide definitional context.
And what we are seeing tonight is the exact same thing that we saw last night, correct? Without those changes.
So I would hope your motion with similar language, which I can I can provide as needed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would hope that you would provide said motion.
So I didn't have to take care of it.
All right, or any other questions on the sustainability policy? All right, seeing none, now we can move on to parting words from retiring board members. I believe, well, so I believe that a resolution was read in your honor at the Hanover meeting. I know that a resolution was read in Lily's honor at the Norwich meeting. Those resolutions still stand here. I am not, unless people are upset, I wasn't going to read through them exactly tonight. But I did want to give each of our retiring board members an opportunity to. Provide a few comments, reflect on what an awesome time that has been for you. How sad you are to be leaving and really wish that you could have figured out another way to continue your participation, but. I believe I'm putting words in your mouth, so.
Welcome back.
Tony, would you like to go?
And the board meetings are just getting interesting.
Uh, I just want to thank uh, my fellow board members for all the hard work that you put in, as I said, in Hanover. I think everyone else puts in more work, more committee work than I do, and I am very appreciative of all the committee work that you all do, as well as the board meetings and um. I hope our schools continue to rip on and prosper with their wonderful staff. Um, as students.
Thank you.
Um, you all do amazing work, and I am constantly impressed with how much time and effort you put into all your work on the board. Um, and I feel terrible that I am leaving the board just when I think I understand the Vermont education funding formula. Thanks to Neil's presentations over the last ten years that I have watched. Um, and I understand that that's gonna change again, so I will be completely in the dark. But. Thank you for everything you've done. I've had a really good time serving.
Now, both of you, thank you so much for your service. We really appreciate it. My board members, we're gonna give them. For a position that rarely gets any acknowledgements or accolades, um. Thanks to both of you. We really appreciate it. And good luck and whatever you're gonna. Do with all that free time now. So, all right, uh, before we're gonna move on to business requiring action. My suggestion. Is that I, Jay, did you change things since I have not refreshed my view yet? If you haven't, that's okay. Um, I would just suggest that we approve the consent agenda as it is listed here, at least in my view, which is expenditures, minutes, calendar. And the Burn Foundation, and we can handle the sustainability as a separate motion, and then we can also do a separate motion on. Um, legal counsel.
Currently have an F that says new agenda.
I'm typing as we speak.
That's okay. Don't don't bother, Jay. Uh, you can just leave it. If if we just have a board member that's willing to make a a motion for the consent agenda, which is B through E. Currently, Kelly, go ahead.
Love to approve items B through E as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second for that? Second, but Deb, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Ben, can you do this the honor of the motion on the sustainability policy?
Would approve policy A E sustainability after repositioning the two paragraphs defining sustainability into a section titled definitions.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Deb, any discussion on that? No discussion. All those in favor, please raise your hands. That is also unanimous. Then finally, I would say if there was a board member out there that would be willing to make a motion that sounded something like move to authorize the superintendent to engage legal counsel. In review of education reform proposals in the state of Vermont throughout the remainder of the legislative session. That would be an awesome motion.
I would move. That the superintendent engage legal counsel. To explore and analyze and keep up with Vermont's education finance reform through the rest of the session.
Nice. Is there a second for that? Second in from Lily, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hands. That is unanimous. Thank you, Board. That concludes our business requiring action for the moment. We're gonna move on to report of the. That concludes our business requiring action for the moment. I'm gonna move on to reporter of the chair. I would like to announce that voting will take place at the Richmond Middle School Gym this year, not Hanover High School. Go to the Richmond Middle School Gym, please, on March 4th. Register your address and vote if you're in Hanover. If you're in Norwich, just do it right in Norwich, at Tracy Ball.
But.
Oh, yes.
But come to the Hanover High School auditorium on Thursday night for our annual meeting where we go over the warrant articles.
Yeah, this is two nights away.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Thursday night.
Five o'clock for Hanover, seven for Dresden.
All right. Thank you for that reminder, Deb. I appreciate it. Uh, committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Seeing none, gonna move on to the superintendent's report.
I'm pleased to report that my report that I gave last night stands. The only difference, the one attached to this particular agenda has a different heading. Um, if you have any questions about the items that I discussed yesterday, happy to answer them.
Any questions on the superintendent's report? And I also see an assistant superintendent's report in the package. And I see Robin Steiner.
I'm happy to answer any questions. It's fairly similar, but I have been doing some walkthroughs. I did several today with Julie for about two hours and everything else is there.
Awesome. Thank you, Robin. Board members, any questions on the assistant superintendent's report? Seeing none. Robin, you left him speechless. Nicely done.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to the business administrator report.
I only have a couple things tonight. Um, we've attached a document that Jamie and I put together for the department happenings between the custodium, maintenance, food service, the business office, and then the finance part, and then transportation. So that'll be for your review. Um, and then we've also attached all the MS-26 documents. And I did pass along the MS-26 form, just the signature page that needs to be signed for submission. Now, really, that's all I have. No questions?
Any questions for our business administrator tonight? Thank you for the report. All right, board, where we thought we were gonna get out of here quickly, we do have need for a non-public session this evening. It is going to fall under the A32C area. Some would be so willing to make a motion. Deb?
I move to enter into non-public session at 8:36 PM under RSA 91-A, colon, 3, 2, for N-C.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second in from, I'm gonna give it to Michael this time, but we are gonna do a roll call vote and start with Tony.
Nelson, yes.
Keeney, yes. Rodelle, yes?
Macaulay, yes.
Okay, thank you. We are gonna do a non-public session, be back in a bit. We are gonna do a non-public session, be back in a bit. We are gonna do a non-public session, be back in a bit. for a couple motions and votes. Is there a second? Seconded by Michael, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, board. Uh, please reach out to Jay for any future agenda topics, any other public comments this evening?
Tonight, sorry. I'm changing vote to abstaining, not voting.
Sure, we can, okay, so that, so that, yeah, uh, for the folks that are, uh, doing the minutes or watching online, the tuition waiver motion was no longer unanimous. We had one abstention, which was Tony Berry. All others were in favor. Okay. Um, no more public. Yes.
It just occurs to me, do you, does the note taker know who is not present at the meeting tonight? Because when you talk about unanimous, we don't have everybody here.
So, so some meetings, you, we, we announce who's not there to finish the meeting, otherwise they.
I could quickly note, though, Tony Berry, Deb Nelson, Marcelo DeBlossy, Ben Keeney, Neil Odell, Garrett Palmer, non-voting member, but that's okay, we like him still. Kelly McConnell, Willie Triman, Michael Costa, for the record. All right, board members, any other agenda topics for future meetings? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Hey, which one of our retiring board members would like to do that?
Sorry. I move to adjourn at eight fifty-eight P M.
Which other retiring board member would like to second it? All those in favor, please get up and leave. Thank you, board.
Hi.
I'm sorry. We'll do it. Uh, roll call, Costa.
Costa, yes.
Triman, yes.
McConnell, yes.
Odell, yes.
Keeney, yes.
DeBlossy, yes.
Nelson, yes.
All right, thank you, board. There you go.
All right, thanks, Neil.
And just a reminder, Thursday, after our board meeting, we will be retiring to Sato's Kitchen.